Hello and welcome to the Asian American Forward Podcast. My name is Katie Simpson and I'm here with my usual co-host Dawn Sun. And we have another panel of New York City candidates today. We're really excited to welcome Sandra Ahn and Gigi Lee to our show. So Sandra, Dawn, Gigi, hi, welcome. Thanks for being here.
Hi.
Hi.
And you hear my dog. You might hear him again.
Oh, so cute. What kind of dog?
He's a pug.
Oh.
If he keeps barking, I'll lift him up so you can say hi.
Okay, wonderful. I love that. So I'm really excited just to have an informal chat with you guys today. We talk a lot about New York City politics on the show, but also just to hear about like, it's been very interesting as we've interviewed people to just talk about what we've learned from this last year of pandemic. I think it's really been a pivotal year for American politics. So I'm excited to dig into all of that with you ladies and Dawn. But first, I wanted to give you each a minute or two to introduce yourselves to your, to our guests, to our audience. So since you're on the top on my screen, Sandra, you can go first.
Sure. My name is Sandra Ahn and I'm running for New York City Council in District 20 out in Queens. Covers Flushing and some parts of Fresh Meadows, Murray Hill and Queensborough Hill. A little bit about myself, I was born in Cambodia and my family and I escaped the genocide there. We made it to the United States when I was seven and I came to Flushing, Queens when I was 10. Actually, I grew up, I grew up in Flushing, Queens. I'm still in Flushing, Queens. My parents are still in Flushing, Queens. In fact, they live right next to me. That has not changed since I grew up here. I, you know, went to all the public schools here, eventually graduated from Columbia Law School and I entered this public service world in 2005. And currently I work for the Congresswoman Grace Meng, even though I'm taking a big break right now to run for city council. And thank you for having me on here today.
We're excited to have you. Gigi, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. So I'm Gigi Lee. I'm running for city council in Council District One, which includes lower Manhattan. So I was born in Hong Kong. I came here with my family when I was about three years old. And I currently live in the same apartment that my grandparents and my parents lived in, right on Pell Street in the core of Chinatown. Very famous street that everyone knows for all the signs and in the historic core. I'm a social worker by training and I was inspired to run for office and get involved in, in politics because I first worked with families and children that were impacted by domestic violence and in shelter. And it was so difficult for them to get services that they needed, even with an advocate like me helping them. And so that was the reason I went to social work school. And after that, I spent 10 years working in the nonprofit world focusing on increasing funding on the state and city levels. I think the thing that I'm most proud of is helping design and implement UPKNYC. And then was on my local community board for 10 years and I'm currently, or not currently, taking a break like Sandra is, but most recently, the Chief of Staff for Councilmember Margaret Chen.
Well, you guys both have super impressive bios and also great like personal stories. So I'm excited to hear about that. You're both immigrants, which is a cool thing to talk about. But I wanted to start on kind of a serious note, which is how we've been starting with a lot of our guests lately, just to kind of give you a chance to respond both personally and as candidates to the uptick in hate crimes we've generally been seeing this year against Asian Americans. And if you have anything you want to say about that, just as a person or as a candidate, how we can prevent these crimes going forward.
Um, yeah. So Sandra, if it's okay, I'll go first. So I think that there has been an overwhelming amount of organizing and support amongst the API and just allyship community because of, because of this increase in, in Asian, you know, hate crimes against Asians. What I will say that is that this is not something that's new, right? I think that what we're seeing now is people who are willing to speak out about it, who are willing to report it. So I think that's one. I think two, you know, I have taken part in what is called Protect Chinatown, which is a group down here in Chinatown that was founded by a couple of my neighbors. And we do neighborhood walks every weekend and we hand out safety alarm keychains. We have a running list of volunteers and if seniors call, we can escort them back and forth so that they're not alone, right? Whether it's doctor's visits, going to the supermarket, right? And so there have been a lot of these kinds of neighborhood, like groups that have come of that. But I think looking in the long term, something that I'm championing is a more robust and inclusive ethnic studies curriculum, K through 12 in our school system. I think that is just vitally important. This is a generational systemic institutional issue that we're not going to solve, you know, tomorrow or next week or next month.
Sandra, anything you want to add?
Yeah, sure. So to get back what Gigi said, I think it's very important to have, you know, our education system include not just what Asian Americans have, you know, contributed to United States history, but to include the rich diversity of what other minorities and what other immigrant groups actually have contributed to the US history. Moreover, because I'm a lawyer, I think a lot of people has been asking, why isn't something charged as a hate crime? Why is this crime not charged as a hate crime? I know that's very frustrating for many people. And I do encourage the DAs in all, you know, in New York City. I know this is beyond New York City, DAs in all the five boroughs and, you know, including other states, to really take a look at the hate crime statute if they indeed have one. I realize some states don't even have a hate crime statute. And to see how we could really look at how we could change how a DA, a DA's office actually prosecute a crime as a hate crime. And, you know, to, you know, look at some circumstantial evidence and see how it could go forward to that. And lastly, I think it's really important to increase the diversity NYPD and our district attorney's office and our court system. And, you know, we have to increase it from the top, you know, does not necessarily just, we need people, we need commissioners, we need the DAs, we need people to, you know, reflect the diversity of the city.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew and Gigi. And the thing is that we both have met, it's two months ago. And that's time is the when we run for Angry End to run the mayor's campaign for the New York mayor. And originally, I see the trend, the Asian woman to stand up, especially in New York City. I do hope both of you win the election. So it's, it's anyway, you can each update a little bit about your campaign status and in terms of voter base and how many voter ID and what's your base? And also it's in terms of fundraising. I know Sandra is raising a lot of money. And for the Gigi's, I just want to know it's a whole, the Asian community, whether it's they contribute a lot or it's still have a room to grow. That's the basically where focused on the campaign part.
Yeah, yeah. So you're right. Definitely. I didn't raise as much money as Sandra, but I did max out in the January filing. So we're very solid there. Look, I think I am very lucky that I have a strong base of support, not only in, from the Chinese community in, in Chinatown in lower Manhattan, but because of the efforts and groups and, you know, relationships that I have and my husband have, you know, and my, you know, extended family. I also was able to get a lot of support from the Chinese, Chinese voter, donors, I'm sorry, donors in Brooklyn as well, right? And I think we're very interrelated. The Asian American community is very interrelated in terms of, you know, Chinatown, Flushing, Sunset Park, Bensonhurst. A lot of individuals may like, for example, live in Sandra's district, but have a small business in Chinatown or, or, or they may have small businesses in both Flushing and Chinatown, right? And so I wouldn't be surprised if you looked at, you know, some filings and you see, you know, donors that are, you know, have donated to multiple Asian American candidates because it is a very tight knit community.
About Sandra?
I'll just add that I think this year we really do have a record amount of Asian Americans candidate running. So like Gigi says, I think the Asian American community has been very generous and very kind to all of us running and I really appreciate that. But so beyond fundraising, you know, we just finished our petitioning process, which is a process to get our names on the ballot. So you could see our names on June 22nd in New York City. I believe Gigi and I, you know, made a hurdle. Our names will be on the ballot in June. So that's also very exciting. So in terms of campaign update, I mean, I've been very fortunate that I've been able to get an endorsement of the congress member of this district, Peter Ku, the city council person, Toby, who is the state senator of my district. And also, you know, I've been able to get some, you know, really good union endorsements like UFT, United Federation of Teachers. Today I just did one with the sanitation department there. So it's been a really great experience. I think going forward, I'll speak, you know, for myself, it's like, I believe I have to go out and reach voters and connect with voters. I think that is really the only way to win. Both Gigi and I are in the field of a lot of candidates, lots of candidates out there. So, I mean, for me, I believe it's really important to, you know, to, you know, talk to a voter or call voters. So every day I'm pretty, if I don't have the event like this, pretty much every day I'm out there knocking on people's doors and trying to meet people. And see, and another day is not just for me. It's also, it's, I think it's important when you're knocking people's doors, they tell you what is it that they're concerned with? What is it that, you know, that they want for their community and for their neighborhood? And sometimes you miss that personal touch when you do big events because people don't have a chance to personally connect with you. That's why I'm a big believer in like being out in the field and, you know, knocking on people's doors.
Good. I know the knocking door is the number one. All politics is the local. I used to run a lot of a local politics in California. And after ran the presidential with Andrew, and now it's back to the local. So I know it's a whole top, a local election, you're knocking the door. It's a very, very critical. But this year is a plus, the anti-Asian crime, it's the violence, the race. Do you have any sense of the Asian youth, young people generation for the GOTV side and also from a rank choice voting system? Do you combine these two elements into your campaign strategy? And what's your, in January, what's the sense of the rank choice voting system? And plus the Asian youth to GOTV, get them registered as a new voter? What's the, your impression there?
I'll go first. So I would say Andrew has done an amazing job of getting out the young Asian American vote. I'm really super impressed by that. I like to say, you know, like, hey, you know, I'm running and then the youthful out there saying, wow, Sandra's running. Let me go out there and register and vote for Sandra. I mean, look, you know, a big passion of mine always is always to encourage the younger generation to get involved. My district, actually over 50% of them, over people vote, it's like 55 plus. So I definitely have older voters in my district. And that's always been to me, like, not just the older voters, even people of my generation. I'm not that young, but I'm not that old. Even to convince my friends to come out vote, they're my friends, right? They're like, well, why should I vote? They don't understand the connection of why it's so important to be sufficiently engaged and have the Asian American voice out there. So that's always a constant struggle since I've been working in this world in 2005 to get the younger Asian American generation, not just Asian Americans, that's a younger generations to get out there and vote. But I believe, and you know, Andrew Yang, because he's running, has done tremendous for getting the younger generation involved. And I'll just add a few things about rank choice voting. It is new here in New York City, something the voters vote for. It was by voters referendum. I don't know. I mean, a lot of people ask me these questions, where to work for? Where I was like, I honestly don't know. All I know is the law. And we have to do our best to go and educate the voters about this new law. But this is happening regardless of people like it, they don't like it. I'll say one of the biggest issues I have about rank choice voting is that my district has one of the lowest voter turnout. So when you add low voter turnout, a new way of voting, plus always a language access issue. Like one of my, my platforms is language access. It's really hard to get people involved, engaged, get their benefits, understand what's going on the government if, you know, they don't understand what's going on because language access is an issue. So one of my biggest things about rank choice voting, and I actually did it in my YouTube video in both Chinese and Korean, is a quick tutorial in rank choice voting in both Chinese and Korean. Because you have to empower people in order for this, for this rank choice voting to work out.
Yeah. So I probably should have said before that I'm very fortunate to have Andrew Yang's endorsement for city council. And so we have been partnering together, you know, for visibility, for voter turnout, for engagement. And so, you know, there's definitely a lot of overlap there in terms of young Asian voters that, and Asian voters in general, right? In Chinatown that are very, very excited about, about Andrew and hoping that that translates to excitement about Gigi as well, right? I think that the challenge, you know, another challenge with rank choice voting is just that there hasn't been that much education around it, right? If you look at other cities or municipalities, their, their engagement prior to the first vote of using this new approach is somewhere in the one to two year range, right? So that is much, much more time to really reach people than, than in New York City, right? And you're also experiencing in New York City, the most city council candidates that ever, right? In the history, and then you add on all the other races on the ballot that come before us, right? Mayor, comptroller, public advocate, borough president. So you're like, who are your top five choices for six different, you know, DA, right? For DA doesn't have a right to, right? But, but that's a lot of decisions and a lot of like knowing, you know? And so it's going to come down to crunch time and think like, I think the data shows that most people make their decisions in the last two weeks, right? So it's really going to be about field, 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 field. And, you know, similar to Flushing, lower Manhattan Council District One is a trilingual district. So it's English, Chinese and Spanish for everything. And that is, you know, that's an additional level of work that we have to do and be prepared for, you know, coming into, coming into the primary in June.
Yeah, that, there's like certainly a lot to consider there. And you guys have brought up a lot of really interesting points that I hadn't thought about before. But I want to walk it back a little bit because one of my favorite things when you guys were both talking about your bios is you're really deep roots, both in Flushing and in Chinatown. And so I'm really curious about, this, this year has been a year of a lot of change across the US. And you even have, you know, further roots in New York City. I can't, if I'm right, Gigi, did you move to New York when you were 10 and three?
Into seven.
And Sandra was seven. So you, you've been in the city for a long time. So I'm really curious about what the biggest change you guys have seen over your lives in New York has been. And you can connect that to like sort of how, how you see the city moving going forward or what kind of steps you think the government needs to take to sort of make life better for NYC residents.
I think for Chinatown, the biggest change I've seen, I'll give you, you know, I think there's two, two ways that I want to answer this question. The first one is that, you know, I, like many of my peers, went to New York Chinese school, which is on 16 Motte Street, which is about 62 Motte Street, which is about two blocks from where my apartment is. When I was little, and I know when you're little, everything seems farther away, but Chinatown was so packed on Sundays at 10 o'clock that it took me 10 minutes to navigate through the crowds on the streets on Motte Street in Chinatown to just get, to get to class, my 10 AM Chinese school class. And so what I've seen over these years is just, I would say, less foot traffic, less families in Chinatown, sort of a lot of it, you can chalk up to gentrification. It's never just one thing, right? But a lot of Chinatown is a naturally occurring retirement community. Like Sandra said, there's a huge aging population because the apartments are small tenement style. There's not a lot of homeownership options down here. And if they are, they're upwards of a million dollars for like, you know, a one bedroom. You're, you're really seeing a dramatic demographic shift. And so really the core, the core of Chinatown, and then you add COVID on top of it, is just experiencing this huge, huge, like punch in the gut when it comes to economy and small businesses. So I think that, that is one thing that I have to bring up. And then I think the second issue is that, you know, I found out I was pregnant right when COVID became a thing in, in mid-February.
Oh, my God.
And had my baby in October. And my baby is going to be six months next week. And so the issue of health disparity and healthcare, particularly during COVID, has really, is an issue that I see now in a, in a very different light. You know, the issue of just infant mortality and also the disparity in, in mortality when it comes to African-American moms giving birth, right? And access to doulas and midwives and sort of how that whole process, you're shepherded through that whole process is, is something that is sort of a new, a new passion of mine based on just this, this new phase in my life that I'm experiencing, you know, now as a mom.
Yeah. Wow. Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll say, I mean, you know, it's interesting. So Flushing is, you know, I would say is entirely like, you know, so when I first moved to Flushing when I was 10, so I came to 97, I moved forward to Flushing when I was 10. Like my family was the first Asian American family in the block, right? And now there is no, there's no one else in this, in my whole block other than Asian American families. So that's definitely been demographic wise, a change in, you know, the makeup of Flushing, which, which is interesting, but it's also for me as somebody, I always make it very clear that, you know, Flushing is more than the Asian American community, you know, is still, there are other people who live in Flushing. And I always make it clear, like, I'm always the person, like, I'm a coalition builder. You know, I believe in representing your entire community and not just one segment of your community. In terms of this whole COVID, you know, the one thing I did realize, I didn't get, I don't marry, I don't have children. But the one thing I did realize is, so I told you, my parents, they're seniors, they live next to me. Probably before COVID, I didn't think that much about the daily care, about how they go about their lives. But when COVID hit, obviously they had to stay at home, right? They're old. My dad actually has Parkinson's. So I realized like COVID really hit the seniors very hard because one, they can't go to the senior centers and their doubt daycare centers to get most of the things they usually need, also companionship. They don't have that human interaction with people anymore. Like I'm the only person they talked to when COVID hit. And I know a lot of my friends were like, how you talk to them? You go out, but you talk to them and you see them. But I was like, but I was like, I told my friends, I'm in this place where if I don't go and see them and talk to them, who's going to go and talk to them and see them? It's a very lonely existence to be, you know, when you're a senior and you can't go out, you can't talk to other people. That actually made me realize something about how important, I mean, we don't really, we say we do, but I don't think we really pay enough attention to senior care in our communities. And this goes beyond getting them the resources they need. I think this goes to rethinking about how we think about seniors as part of our family, about how to, they want to age at home with dignity, right? So how is it that our society, our, our community could help the seniors do that? And help family members, someone like me, I'm going to say this, help my, my parents do that. But during this whole COVID, I feel like I struggle a lot between, you know, I got to help my parents to the grocery shopping, go to a banks, right? I have a job. Okay, campaigning is my own issue. But you know, like, how do you balance all that? And I think about you, Gigi, and you have like, you have a baby, you have a spouse. How do you expect, you know, like children, like, you know, to do that? And also, you know, do in a way where you also want to succeed and do, you know, do well in your own career. So I think it's a way we need to rethink about how, you know, employers, the community, the society, think about, you know, like treating like seniors as a real facet into, you know, you know, care for their family.
Yeah, I'm so glad that you guys are both like hitting on very similar, but very different themes about like caretaking and how important that is when we think about politics and also especially when we think about the effects of the pandemic. I feel like our first instinct often is to talk about business and the economy and how that's affecting people. But it's also got all these under the surface effects from motherhood to like senior care. I have a grandparent also who has Parkinson's and has been in an assisted care facility this year with, we've had very little access to him and friends who've had babies kind of through the pandemic. So I'm also really interested to hear more about how as women in politics, you guys kind of think that you can bring something unique to New York and to sort of the pandemic recovery process that's going to be starting, you know, as we get into the next months and years.
Yeah, you know, it's 2021, but, you know, I have still gotten comments like, oh, well, if you have a baby, shouldn't you be focused on raising your baby? You know, like, how does your husband feel about that? And, you know, it's not new and I, I struggle each time because you're like, oh, am I going to lose a vote if I tell them how I really feel, you know? So I, I try to temper it back a little bit and say something like, oh, you know, I have a, I have a very supportive, you know, extended family network or, you know, but I think it is, it's challenging, right? And I, and I think that there's, there's one thing that is absolutely true, which is part of your brain does become like, it's like, this is my mom brain, right? And there's a lot more to, there's a lot more to think about. But what I've also noticed is that I'm a lot more efficient with my time. Like the little things just don't bother me as much anymore. Like if it, they'll get done, they'll get done. Does it have to be done today from 2:00 PM to 2:15 PM? Like, you know, my, my type A personality used to do it, right? No, you know, it, as long as it gets done, as long as it gets done fairly well, right? Or sometimes if it's on my husband's to-do list, as long as it gets done, period. But it's just the bigger things and prioritizing. And also I feel less bad now saying no, right? If it's not, you just have to make those judgment calls for yourself because, you know, I want to spend, let's say like two hours with my daughter every night. And then I also try to keep half of Sunday open so that we have family time. You know, my in-laws and my, and my parents didn't get to hold Jemmy until six, until she was five months because of vaccinations, right? And my younger sister, I became an aunt before I became a mom and my parents didn't hold her until she was 11 months, right? And so like, you know, that's a lot of like happy grandparent time that was lost and we want to make up for some of that. So I think, you know, there's always a balancing act, but I feel like women running for office, there's just more critique and, and people feel more entitled and more, more sort of like, it's okay to say those things to you. And I don't think, I don't think that if I were a man, I would get those same comments.
Yeah. I mean, once you're a mom, everyone has an opinion about everything. Yeah.
Oh, and I'm going to just, just, you know, follow up on what Gigi said. It's true. I feel as a woman candidate, you get critique a lot, which I feel like a male candidate would. So I'll give perfect example of my constant struggle. Well, if you are, if you are too strong, you appear too aggressive, that's not womanly. Well, especially with the Asian American community, right? Definitely not womanly. But if you're too self-spoken and you're not really being aggressive, you don't make a strong case, you're not showing your leadership skills. It's like, so where is it that you strike the balance where you could be in that perfect situation and that perfect role where you could piece both sides?
Every single time.
Yes. But I don't think the male candidates get those type of critiques at all. Because I was joking, like I'm joking, it was like, anyway. So once someone told me, oh, wow, the male candidate gave away apples, right? Give apples to seniors. Wow, what a leadership skill. He was giving away apples to seniors. And you'll definitely get press coverage for that. But as a female candidate, you have to show you have much more substance, right? You have to do more than the parents, the, you know, the chunk of parents that give out apples. So, I mean, these are the things that, you know, I mean, I think that's why it's important to have more women candidates running, especially Gigi, Asian American candidates running. I hope if nothing else, we could serve as role models to other younger Asian American women out there and let them know that it's definitely, you know, definitely doable, definitely something, you know, that they, if that's what they aspire to do, it's doable. Be both work for bosses who are elected officials, who worked very hard to become elected officials and be really great in that roles. And I hope you could, you know, continue that tradition.
Well, I think it's, you guys are like, even with all of the struggle, I've so enjoyed talking to you because you bring up really, really different like policy areas even than like other male candidates that we've interviewed and just have a really different perspective. So I just want to commend you that you have something unique to bring alongside those struggles that you face. But we'll bring Dawn back in. Sorry for going off. You're the only man in the room today. Do you have any, anything you want to add?
I just want to jump in. Welcome to California. California, we have Kamala Harris, we have a baby Yi, we have a Fionna Ma. They're all state constitutional candidate and elected official. They're all state constitutional candidate and elected official. I, in California, we treat women equally at the best. Okay, pull up a, a quick question about the, the, back to the campaign. There's a kind of a relationship, uh, when you campaign. There's a so many requirement for your, on your busy schedule. So it's a how you choose the which when you go, which when you don't go, which organization you like, which one you don't like. That's kind of a, a little bit tricky. Only your people can, I think it can answer my question. Is it the, we have a, always a, in politicians, they always have some balance. So it's, I just want to say, what's your philosophy or generally the how you choose and the pick of the event and based on the priority and the strategy?
So, you know, I don't want to speak for Sandra, but I think working for, having worked for an elected official, that's one of the skills you learn, right? Because, um, those are decisions that elected officials have to make every day. And so certainly, of course, um, you know, you weigh, you know, whether it's events of based on, um, personal relationships that you have or you've worked with an organization that you know has done great work in the community, right? You want to balance geographically. So, you know, certainly we get the, oh, if you're, if you're Asian, are you only going to show up to events in Chinatown, right? We hear that a lot of, will you represent the Latino community? Do you represent, you know, the West Side if you live in the East Side, right? So you want to balance, I guess, like geography, you want to balance, um, you want to balance issues. I think organizations, you certainly want to also, um, just balance general, uh, you know, passing out of palm cards and visibility and high, um, high foot traffic areas. And so, um, a, a rule that we try to follow, um, and I ask my team to try to be conscious of is to do a mixture of those events every day. So we're not just doing the same thing over and over again, right? With COVID and with Zoom, it's much easier to be in, you know, five meetings throughout an evening. You know, with Lower Manhattan, because of the density of people, it was fairly easy to travel back and forth. But in, you know, in outer boroughs where districts are a lot bigger, I think Zoom has been much more helpful because you can be in people's, more people's living rooms in one evening than was ever possible before.
Thank you. How about Sandra? You have more experience there, right?
I think, I think like Gigi says, we are fortunate enough that we work for elected officials. So that, like, so we know, I mean, a lot of groups that, you know, we already know those groups, right? It's not like we had to do background research to find out more information. We kind of know them because that's the nature of our jobs and what we're doing. For me, it's, you know what, I, I mean, you know, I don't know, maybe this isn't the best campaign strategy. I actually take my schedule one week at a time. I really do not plan out my, um, campaign schedule more than one week at a time. And I think I do, I mean, and, and I do that purposely just because sometimes things just change a lot within a week. And it's not like, it's, you know, I think in our world, you can't plan for what happens outside events, right? Events happen, if they happen, you, you know, your community looks at you as a leader, you have to respond to those events. So I always, you know, consider, you know, those, uh, factors. And lastly, I do actually take my team's suggestions really seriously. As much as I, you know, I believe I have, you know, like, I know what's going on, I know these groups, I know what I should be doing. At the same time, I realize it's a very insular way, um, because I'm the candidate. So I always appreciate, uh, my team, which, you know, I trust them. And to, I always like feedback from my team about what they think I should be doing, what they think I should be doing more. But sometimes in your own head, you think you're like, oh, you're like, you know, evenly spacing everything out. You're really meeting all the groups out there. But maybe reality, that's not really true.
Thank you.
Well, um, I love the practical advice as well. We're about coming to the, to the end of our time. So I want to make sure that I have time to ask our standard question that we ask all of our guests, which is when we aren't talking about politics on this show, we're talking about books. So do you have a book that you would like to recommend to our listeners?
Um, I have two. One is right here. This is Jemmy's favorite right now. It's a finger puppet book called Baby Bear. It's part of the evening, uh, reading regiment. And then for myself, um, our district has, always has very controversial, um, land use items. And, uh, I'm actually reading a book called, um, The History of the South Street Seaport. And it really talks about sort of the evolution of, um, basically the genesis of this city. And I, you know, I'm, I'm sort of a history buff. And so I always like to, um, it's part research and also just part, um, my own enjoyment of, um, you know, we can always, we're lifelong learners and anything where I can learn more about my district, uh, I'm all about it.
Awesome.
So, in my spare time, uh, so in my spare time, since you're talking personally, I really don't read or do anything like involving more politics. I feel like when I need a break, I just need a break. So one of my favorite things to do is I like to read mystery novels. It's just, it's just my, it's my thing. So, uh, my favorite mystery novel, um, not my favorite, but one of the ones I follow a lot is, um, you know, I don't know if you read mysteries, but her name is Sue Grafton and she writes the Kinsey Millhorns, like, she's a private, she's a female private investigator. And it is, she does the alphabetical ones. So it's A for alibi, B for burglary. And this actually, if no one has, um, you know, has tried that series, it's actually a very good series, you know? I always try to read, you know, books about strong women and, uh, you know, it's just something to do to just turn your brain off from like politics.
Yeah, I feel like also as a lawyer, you would be like very into the crime novels. Dawn, do you have anything else you want to add before we close up today?
Not much. I just wish both of you win the election. I know that the candidate, there's the only criteria is to win the election. I best wishes to both of you and especially to inspire the, all the Asian young kids in New York City and try to, uh, to, to inspire people, especially for the Asian young women and bring them up this year. It's a very, very critical for both of you, just, uh, uh, we want to help you as much as I can. So it's the, uh, I have too much, the, the work for the Andrew, but at the meantime, I really, really want to help you each individually. And also it's a, we plan to do some, uh, G O T V event and, uh, and try to gather concert party there if possible. So that I hope you can all join with the, the celebration when the, I think it's in the May, it's probably going to open. So it's the, we're going to, uh, bring a lot of young kids to the, to the park and ask them to do the registration. Thank you. That's the, my conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us on today.
Yeah, thanks for coming. I really enjoyed it. So we'll wrap it up there for this week. And of course, thank you all for, uh, talking. My co-host is Dawn Sun and I'm Katie Simpson. Our podcast is sponsored by Asian American Forward. You can visit our website at asianamericanforward.com. If you enjoyed the show this week or have a topic you'd like to hear us discuss on a future episode, you can send us your comments at info@asianamericanforward.com. We'd love to hear from you. You can also find us on Facebook and hear more conversations between Dawn and I at our YouTube channel, which you should also subscribe to. If you're a fan of the show, you can leave us a rating or a review in the Apple Podcast Store or tell someone about us. Really helps people find the show. Thanks for listening and we'll talk to you again next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.